Five, whatever you write.
All right, it is Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, it is seven oh three P M. This is meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. I will do a real call right now.
Just watch here.
Mel and Mark present, Jeanne Haley Dipple present. Is there anyone on Zoom, including possibly Mr. Brady? Mr. Creighton?
Sorry, people are popping on as we speak. Okay, I did not have either of them.
Okay. And Mr. Brady is ill tonight. We're going to do pledge of allegiance. Once Justin gets back. Thank you, Justin. All right, everyone, thank you for listening to the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a indivisible liberty and justice for all. Hey. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? There anyone by, well, wait, just to come back, just to make sure there's no one by Zoom. Is there anyone by Zoom that would like to comment this? Great, thank you. Okey dokey. So moving to licenses, permits, and events, the first one on the agenda is the South Shore Community Center Nursery School Halloween Event Application and One Day Entertainment License. Is there anyone here from the South Shore Nursery Center? No school.
Yeah, so I do have the chief is popping up as we speak.
Okay.
Hi there.
You can be here.
There.
Here's what I'm gonna put. Because it's hard to see. You're gonna mute us though.
Recording in progress.
Okay. You'd like to promote you quickly if he has anything he'd like to say?
I, um, no, this is pretty straightforward. The annual event requires both the event permit and an entertainment. One day entertainment license, no issues. I have the insurance and all the paperwork and we're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Um, my fellow select board members, any discussion? No. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the event permit and one day entertainment license for the South Shore Community Center Nursery School for their Halloween event on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye. Aye. All right. Have a very fun Halloween event. Um, next up. Thank you, Chief. Next up is the Cohasset Yacht Club for an on-premises all alcohol annual license. Um, we did request that and we appreciate that the applicant is willing to continue this hearing. Um, I think I need to open the hearing, is that right, Tracy? Okay. So. The town of Cohasset, this is the public hearing notice, the Cohasset Select Board acting as a liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven ten P M. And ninety-one Sawyer Street will cut common, commons Cohasset, Massachusetts to consider the application of Cohasset Yacht Club for a new on-premises Section twelve all alcohol annual license. The proposed manager is Eric Cruz. The license premises is located at ninety-nine Howard Leeson Road, Cohasset, Mass. Proposed hours of operation are Wednesday through Friday, five to ten P M., and Saturday and Sunday, twelve P M. to ten P M. The property consists of one large room on the ground floor, including a great room, restroom, storage, and kitchen in the rear. Additional seating areas on balcony and bar. Second floor with annual outdoor deck on second level. A total square footage is thirty-one thirty square feet. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohassetma.org or in person at the hearing. The public can also attend via Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda. When posted, the agenda will be available online at www.cohassetma.org. In the meetings slash hearings notices of the calendar section located on the bottom of the front page of the website, the Select Board. Um, so with respect to this hearing, we did request because tonight is the night that we need to finalize the warrant and thought that this would be a lengthy process on our end. That the, um, and we also believe that the Cohasset Yacht Club may, maybe, maybe not um, require additional time beyond what we might be able to devote to it. And so the applicant graciously agreed to extend to our next select board meeting on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, but we had to open the hearing to continue the meeting in order to enable that process to occur. And so is there um, a motion that either of, and and they expect that everyone who's interested will be attending on October twenty-fourth? Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion from either of my fellow select board members.
Motion to continue until the twenty-fourth.
Okay, second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye. Thank you. All right, next is a public hearing as to the grant of a licensed pole hearing for eight eighty-one Cedar Street in Cohasset.
So I have Mr. Vazquez from National Grid who was was up. Uh, Mr. Vazquez, you have the coil with your chair. And I see your direction.
Yes, please, Mr. Vazquez. Um, actually, do I need to open a hearing right now? This?
It was just the poll here.
Let me see, looking for the notices as we do. Thank you. All right. This is a public note, hearing notice, grant of license pole hearing, Cohasset Select Board ninety-one Sawyer Street, Willcut Commons, Classic MA, oh two oh two five. The Cohasset Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, seven ten P M. at ninety-one Sawyer Street, Cohasset, Mass, oh two oh two five, or via Zoom with the link below. Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. is requesting permission to erect and maintain one pole to bring electric service to the Cohasset Golf Club eighty-one Cedar Street. They are requesting the perpetual right and license to construct, repair, maintain, operate, add to, and patrol the transmission of high and low voltage electric current and for the transmission of intelligence and telephone use lines to consist of, but not limited to, one pole with wires and cables installed thereon and all necessary foundations, anchors, guys, braces, fittings, equipment, and appurtenances. The public is invited to offer public input on this proposal and writing in advance of the public hearing or at the public hearing. The Tanico has it select board forty-one Highland Avenue, Cohasset MA, oh two oh two five, or email to selectboardcomments@cohassetma.org. All right, so the hearing is open, Mr. Vasquez, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, board. How you doing? My name is Jose Vazquez and I represent National Grid and um, the purpose of this um, is to bring power up the, up to the hill, one seventy-five Cedar Street. And the issue we haven't, they would have done it on their property only, but they have wetlands. So we had to, you know, go to the right. Um, unfortunately, it lands on the town property to then bring it um, up the hill to where their warehouse is gonna be.
So it's right across the street.
So it's on the same side as pole thirty. So if you, you know, if you go in, you know, Cedar Lane is on the left side. Uh, we would say we won't cross the street, we'll just go into the town's property, a hundred and forty feet, and then go to their pole on their property to then feed the building. And it'll be only secondary conductors at the moment. Um, no primary, just secondary lines uh, for now.
Are there any questions, my fellow select board members?
Um, what are they doing now? For power, it's like.
So I I could add a little color. So the um, they've constructed a new maintenance barn behind the existing maintenance barn and it's, it's behind, excuse me, it's behind the DPW garage. Um, so the pole set is uh, is on the uh, the west side of the DPW garage, um, off-site, kind of on a downhill slope. Uh, so out of our operational activities and and out of um, kind of any interference. And they're bringing the the power into their new facility, which is basically behind the DPW garage.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Sure.
Okay, um, I don't have any additional questions, Mr. Plex. All right, I would entertain a motion to grant a license to the Massachusetts Electric Company in Verizon, New England at eighty-one Cedar Street for the purposes of erecting the pole as described in the grant of license.
So moved.
Seven. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye. Right. Thank you, Mr. Vasquez, and thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you for your time, boy. Have a great day.
Thanks, you too. All right. Um, the next is a proclamation relating to Mr. Ernst. Um, I'm not sure if the board has a chance to review the proclamation. This is something that um, one of the select board members, I think Mr. Brady intends to read at the October twenty-second dedication of um, uh, Mr. Ernst's ceremony at Fair Oaks. Are there any questions that the board has about the proclamation?
No.
Okay. Um. Hey, Chris?
Can I read the proclamation aloud or wait until we do the dedication? Or does it matter?
Yes, should I read it into the record now? All right, I'm gonna read the, it into the record now, if it's for the record. Um, and for those attending the ceremony, you can hear it again. All right, whereas Michael T. Ernst was a native son of Cohasset and grew up in a large family. Whereas Michael T. Ernst was inspired by his commitment to his country, enlisted in the U S Navy, and became a chief special warfare operator and Navy SEAL. Whereas Michael Ernst, following multiple deployments around the world, was awarded for his valor, valor in many instances, including being awarded the Silver Star of the nation's third highest for valor in combat and the Joint Commendation Medal with combat device, Army Commendation Medal, three Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medals, Army Achievement Medal Combat Action Ribbon, Good Conduct Medal Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, three C Service Deployment Ribbon and the NATO Medal. Um, whereas Michael Ernst was remembered by his commanding officer as an exceptional teammate and dedicated sailor who used his talents and skills toward our nation's hardest challenges while selflessly mentoring his teammates. Whereas Michael Ernst's legacy of patriotism and dedication is an inspiration to all Cohasset residents and Americans. Whereas the people of Cohasset have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for Michael Ernst, who has selflessly served his country and his service has been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our residents. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Cohasset Select Board, hereby honor the service and sacrifice of Michael Ernst and urge our residents and organizations to display the American flag, particularly on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the date of Mr. Ernst's dedication ceremony, to recognize his service and sacrifice given under our hands and the seal of the town of Cohasset on this tenth day of October in the year two thousand and twenty-three. So that is the proclamation. I would entertain a motion to issue this proclamation.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Aye. Mr. Brady on yet?
I don't see him yet.
Um. The next agenda item we have is an Affordable Housing Trust Select Board Representative Appointment. Um, this is something that we had previously put on, but um, it was a challenge trying to get a representative from the Select Board given when the Affordable Housing Trust meets during the workday. And so I know that Mr. Brady was willing to do it, but he is not here. He is sick tonight. So I am hesitant to appoint him in his absence. I would like him to weigh in. So if it's minimal to my fellow select board members, unless one of you would like to volunteer to join, um, then I think we should wait until Paul is ready to confirm. Okay. So I would, um, I don't know if I need a motion to come on that. Thanks. All right, now we are moving on to special town meeting. Um, we need to finalize and adopt ballot questions for the special town election for the town.
More important than I know.
I don't know about that. So we now being joined by our town lawyer, Ms. Carolyn Murray.
Good evening, folks.
Okay. So we are looking at four questions for the ballot for the special election on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. In order to have these um, questions be voted on, first town meeting has to approve the warrant articles. Is that correct, Miss Moon?
Well, when you say approve the warrant articles, do you mean approve this, the questions for the warrant, for the election warrant? Or do you mean actually vote the at town meeting?
Yeah, so we have corresponding warrant articles that will first be um, put to the residents at town meeting. It's my understanding that in order for us to move to the ballot, we would first need to have a successful vote at town meeting. So for example, to acquire One Pleasant Street first, that needs to be successfully voted on at town meeting.
Technically, you could have the questions in either order you prefer.
Okay.
Could have the election first. I think most towns prefer to have the town meeting vote first. Because if the town meeting vote fails, sometimes they delay the election, um, special election.
So that could be an option if we decided to delay.
You could, okay.
Okay, well, I'm glad I asked. I didn't really think. Not that we're planning on it, but it's good to know. Um, are there any questions that the Select Board has? Well, I will raise the question of whether we should, can, and should put additional information in the content of the question questions right now to try to help the voters understand, you know, which article relates to which question. Um, I know we had raised that last night.
Right, so the the questions are in a form, uh, particularly questions three and four are in a form that the Department of Revenue likes for any sort of debt exclusion proposition, two and a half override question. Um, questions one and two um, are just a standard that we've used anytime that we've looked to purchase land and also, you know, exclude the debt uh, for purposes of of Prop two and a half. Um, you could, if you wanted to, say, cross-reference, say, um, you know, each ballot question to their corresponding article number as voted at town meeting. But we've got to be really careful. We can't put any language in the ballot questions that could arguably be considered advocacy. So while we could put something in here that says, you know, that One Pleasant Street, we could put a parenthetical, say, you know, article, whatever, of the special town meeting. We can't say as approved by the special town meeting, because that tends to suggest, well, town meeting voted in favor of it, so you should too. Another alternative is you could have um, some sort of a handout at the ballot as folks check in. You could give them, you know, a summary sheet that does tell them what each of the questions are about. You could also say in that, you could cross-reference the town meeting um, article there as well. You know, did talk about this a little bit with um, with Chris last week. We do identify One Pleasant Street in question one, one thirty-five King Street in question two, and then the two purposes of the stabilization funds in questions three and four. So I think we do kind of alert people like what this is all about. But, you know, certainly if you, we could play with some additional language, if you thought that would be helpful.
I do think it's helpful to put the address in there, but if if you're at town meeting and you're aware that you're voting on town hall, you're thinking of that issue as town hall, not necessarily One Pleasant Street, Police and Fire, as Police and Fire, not necessarily one thirty-five King Street. Uh, is there a way to uh, with a header or some simplified language along the lines of, on the issue of a new location for Cohasset Town Hall? Or is that going a step too far?
I think we could probably work with that.
Okay.
But could you just do One Pleasant Street comma, proposed Cohasset Town Hall, comma, Cohasset, Massachusetts?
Right, we might have to do a little broader than that, because I think the the warrant article also. Obviously, we have the affordable housing component. We've got general municipal purposes, so um, we might need to broaden that beyond just town hall. Um, but we we could certainly try versus one thirty-five King. We could put, you know, for public safety building.
You say, or I mean, you mean like right now, because they need to vote this tonight to get to the clerk's hands.
So. No, right, too.
To vote specific language.
You do, you do, you do.
Could I make an alternate suggestion that we keep the warrant questions as is, but we work on informational summary, ask the handout when people walk in, and so we just say, we can just say, and including after town meeting, maybe we can just make an informational summary in real time to say, question one relates to the town meeting article X, Y, Z in the warrant that relates to, and then just copy the warrant language and the information summary.
So we would distribute that after town meeting and also be available.
When walking into the election, assuming that a council approves.
That you could do, yes. So that you could also have, I mean, I know that.
Informational and not advocacy.
Correct, correct. And, you know, you as members of the Select Board and the town manager in a little bit slightly different position in that people expect you to to provide information as to, well, what is the effect of a yes or a no vote? Um, so you have a little bit more leeway than, you know, say, I would have on on the effect of it, but yes. Um, that might be a little more effective that people get it, because not the same population shows up at town meeting that shows up to vote all the time, so. Even if you cross-reference an article, they might still say, I have no idea what you're talking about.
So could we do the informational summary that we are proposing to put in the warrant for these same questions?
I think you could.
In the Michael one pager, including that, will we ask the clerk to hand that out if someone walks in to vote earlier absentee?
Sure, you could also, I don't know if you were planning on having, I know there's not a lot of time between the special town meeting and the election date. If you wanted to host like a public forum to provide a little more detail, and now that you know what the outcome of the town meeting votes are, you could put something on the website, you know, information on special town election. Um, anyway, you can think of to get the the word out, so to speak.
What will be the parameters around, you can, you must say in a public meeting.
Well, again, the the select board and town manager here, you're considered to be in a, in a more unique position than say, um, I'll pick on, I don't want to pick on anybody in the setting, but, you know, say, I, it, folks will ask, well, you know, what is the plan at One Pleasant Street? What, how many, how many town offices will be there? Are you going to have a vault for the treasure? What about security? What are you going to do with the units upstairs? All of that, like answering those questions, those are all valid information questions for folks that you know, they, the questions that deserve answers before they cast their votes. You know, the fire chief or the police chief could also talk about, well, why is this annex necessary? Will fire trucks be kept at this annex? So what, um, you know, whether or not the the police chief thinks this is going to improve, you know, response times, things like that. All of that is fine. What we can't, what we couldn't say, and I know that's not part of the discussion here, is you know, if this question doesn't pass, then we're going to have to lay off, you know, X number of employees because that's how we're going to be able to afford to do what needs to be done. I know that is not part of the equation here. I understand. That's why I deliberately said that, not to make anyone nervous, right? But, but yes, folks do expect that we're in a unique position. I mean, let's face it, you are the select board. This is your election warrant. This is your town meeting warrant. Why are you putting it out there and why should you vote for it? That's all perfectly fine.
Which is literally saying, well, yes, right, it's explaining what.
You're not saying, you're not saying vote yes, you're not saying the existing town hall is about to be condemned next week, or if you don't approve this, um, we're gonna have a wrecking crew showing up to demolish it next week, because, you know, we just have to. Um, you never come down to so vote yes or so vote no, it's just, this is what the plan is. Or or how much might this cost the average taxpayer per year, that type of thing. That's all.
We have that.
Are we allowed to recommend, though? Like, so for example, the Long Term Finance Committee has done analysis and we've made a recommendation, including us to these projects based on their cost, yep, and tax impact.
You're allowed to make a recommendation on the special town meeting warrant or even at town meeting, but when it comes to the election, you shouldn't be standing out there saying, vote yes on on question one.
Okay.
As individuals.
Yes, but we, you know, yes, but, you know, I, you'll, you'll be questioned, who paid for that sign? You know, is taxpayer money, that sort of thing. That's when you need to be careful to identify yourself as an individual and not a member of the board. Um, you know, if you're showing up with a sign that looks like my daughter designed it for me, probably okay. But, you know, if there's a, you know, a, you know, a public, you know, political action committee or a five oh one C three that's been formed to really push this through, give yourself some distance from that, let them advocate.
Yeah, it's a slippery slope.
It is.
You know, because it's subject to interpretation.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you said, well, it's only going to be two hundred and twenty dollars, you know, on your tax bill, only is
only, yes.
Subjective word, so.
Right.
I I think we should just stay away from it. So we're gonna let the.
Well, I'm pushing worse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll continue to put out information and putting on the town meeting warrant articles.
Yeah, I should not have done it. Another forum twin town meeting in the election, then I have an idea, actually, if it's on Wednesday or something.
I was, I was thinking the same thing, maybe that Wednesday night, it may not be.
The weather.
Now.
Yeah.
It's good.
All right, so.
I was gonna start to put a bow on the, it seems like uh, our council is telling us that this is legally sound and representative of what we actually intend to do and consistent with the articles in the warrant.
Right.
If we want to put together some explanation for what each of these questions means and distribute that, we can do that. That is not something we need to lock in and vote on this evening.
Correct.
I I could see probably one of the biggest questions we'll get, um, particularly if someone hasn't been to town meeting, but they have been to. They, they are looking at the ballot. The question for one and two is, well, how much?
Right, right. And so that's where I think. And why are the numbers in three and four, but they're not in one and two? That's why for the informational summary, you might want to have that, that dollar amount in there.
Is that something that can be sent out with an absentee ballot? Like, if someone requested ballot by now, can we provide the information somewhere along with the ballot?
I don't think you can, okay.
But we can, I'm asking, sorry, can we provide a link to the town website where that type of information would be available?
Yes.
Like a specimen ballot.
Yes, yes.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about one to four? Okay, does anyone have any questions about one to four? Do we have to separately vote each question, or can we do it all as one to four? You could do it as one through four.
If you wrote them all, and then I would ask this five copies, the book is asked for five wet signature copies of. So that's the pitch to.
If I were to just remind us for one moment. The questions say, this is for the acquisition of the parcel of land. Are we? Okay, so the improvements are considered part of the last sentence costs since they don't relate to here too.
Yes.
Like moving. It's gotta be relocation costs.
I don't think it can include, I don't think it can include relocation costs. Furnishings and equipment, if you had to buy, you know, new desks, new computers, whatever to set up in the building. Yes.
But the one thirty-five King Street, this would also include some level of. A design renovation and construction.
Right.
Does this language cover us?
This is really just going to be for the purchase.
But doesn't, but doesn't including the payment of all costs incidental and related there too. Cover.
But this is the way this is worded, it would be incidental or related there to the acquisition of the land.
If if that was all built into what you're asking for at town meeting. Okay, I I thought we were just doing the land purchase, okay? If if that's all built into your equation for the total amount you're asking for. Then this ballot question is going to cover that, those same items.
I'm not a lawyer, but.
Yep.
Nowhere does this explicitly link to. Town meeting, or does it?
No, it doesn't, because it can stand alone. But you need to have both.
Agreed. But, again, not a lawyer, I'm concerned that. Because this is separate from town meeting, and this does not explicitly link to the description. Of what we're trying to do with town meeting, but there may be a gap there. But I'm not a lawyer, so.
I think, again, that would go to the informational handout for folks that are showing up.
What about the cost, though, to do renovations at our police and fire station, there's, you know, just a few modest things we want to do. And I'm curious, because I don't have it.
One thirty-five King, the acquisition is smaller than the renovations.
Wouldn't the informational sheet? Detail that out?
You can see that the information recovers all of that. So the question that is this. Because this is going to be part to be remodeled, right?
Right. Yes. So that that's not a problem, I mean, renovations or or engineering associated with it, that will be fine. But, since we're closing the warrant tonight, and we have that.
This does reference back to. The town meeting vote I should reference. So you, to the time meeting vote. Our mind says, question. Because that's what the funding is, right? This is, this is the approval of the acquisition of bonding. This funds.
But I think Chris raises a good point, so is this language sufficient to encompass in question two also? Any minor renovations we want to do at our existing.
We are going to add online. On line six, after. The word acquisition, so it says further to appropriate sum of money for the acquisition. Design. And renovation. Of said property and costs incidental or related there too. That way it is clear that this is not just the the cost of the acquisition itself. And, do we need to do the same thing that with Article eight?
A little bit of.
But this would provide coverage. Yeah.
I'd rather have the builders.
So do the same thing on Article eight for the town hall after acquisition. Uh, sorry, for to appropriate a sum of money for the acquisition, we'll add design. And renovation. Of said property and costs incidental or related there too.
But that, as you said, that covers.
Anything that you can borrow for.
With 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 the cost of relocating items from one place to another. Crash, and like, again, we already got, so we have, we're like, we're gonna literally move vault doors from one place to one. That's not attached to the walls, and that's going to cost a lot of money, but that's just. Or or we have to appropriate separately, just to be said.
I think we have to appropriate separately, I don't think that that's covered under purposes for bonding, happy to take a closer look at that. But. I don't think it is.
I don't think it's a lot, I don't think it's a lot of money. We, I think, we could roll that into the content cost.
We'd have to figure out how much that is. We'd also have to. Probably figure out the renovations also to police and fire, right? Existing police and fire, because that, is that going to be? A component. Sorry.
So I think, I think we got Article. Eight and Article one. But you have to change.
On the ballot, on the the election warrant?
Now, so. Payment of all costs incidental related there too, now we tie back, but it's already been stated. Or do you just need to say? Or an acquired by gift environment domain and design renovation?
Well, in a perfect world, uh, do we have, town clerk's going to get this tomorrow morning, right? In real reality?
You have to get it tomorrow afternoon, but yes.
Alright, then, let me make these two so that they're consistent, so that we also get. Your design and renovation. And then, are you saying that under the one thirty-five King Street article, the intent is also to renovate the existing?
So mine.
Police and or fire. Right, but do we then? So so by adding in the acquisition, design and renovation of said property, meaning one thirty-five King Street. But are we then going to have to make? Some renovations at the existing police and fire to make this all happen? Okay, that is not in here, so.
Where's actually the. I mean, again, the alternatives, we could put something into, I don't have a lot of money.
You have some free cash, we could. We could drive down the the tax increase, but we have to figure out what that exact amount is, right?
Michelle on the call. I think I, I, for town hall, I'm, we're budgeting a hundred thousand dollars with an estimate. Oh, she's for Friday.
Town clerk. Right, right, get this out and get it posted. Um, I think it would be better to do that in a separate warrant article to to appropriate money to. Renovate the existing police and fire station, because.
So we just bring the cost down.
Yeah, I don't know that bond council will be really happy mixing two different things, and especially when you've then got to go to the bond market. For the amount to purchase. One thirty-five King Street, I don't know that they want to be mixing. Other properties up with that. You know.
Okay. So we have until Thursday to lock down. The election questions, right?
For a little Friday to Thursday.
Okay. It sounds like we probably need to have another select board meeting. On Thursday or Friday, in order to make this happen. Once Carolyn has a chance, and you have a chance to talk with Michelle.
We could post tomorrow, first thing Friday.
No, or you could generally, you could vote this language tonight. As, you know, as. Proposed to be amended by me. And then you'll have the language tomorrow morning, and you can sign off on the warrant so it can be posted.
Okay, so you could amend. The applicable legalese, but we need to figure out what still. The dollar is, which I don't think is that, it's probably like a hundred or two. But that's not the renovation, we're talking about, just, we're just talking about the renovation cost for. The police and fire station, correct?
Elm Street, yeah.
From street.
I I I don't know that, yeah, I don't even have an idea, but I don't. Sure.
Okay. All the rest is going to be subsumed within what we're bonding, that's just the.
I I have a a thought. Since, well, let's assume this is going to pass, and we know we're going to be spending a year in design and engineering. And why don't we just not include the cost for Elm Street? Because it's gonna, they're not moving for a year, we we could figure out exactly what it's going to cost and do it at town meeting next May.
Right, yeah.
And we'll have free cash, and we'll have free cash at that point, take.
Next fall.
Or or a year from now, next fall, wh- when whenever. We don't have to do it now, because they're not moving out now. Right, and that will bring the bond cost down.
And then we can plan and reduce the taxes.
Right.
And that complicates it less, but we'll. But you even think that will happen within a year?
Should that be improved? So, I mean, yeah, it wouldn't be a lot of money, quite frankly, I mean. So that we get a moving trucks across the country, so.
So. We just added design and renovation, right, to one Pleasant Street, what about? And. Occupancy of one Pleasant Street. And define occupancy as. You're moving in whatever we need to move, I mean, you're moving the whole technology.
Yes.
Infrastructure.
I don't think that is necessarily the issue, the issue is you're borrowing for this, and you've only got. Limited purposes by statute, excuse me, I'm not trying to be rude and check phone, I was going to try and see if I can call up the statute. Uh, for the purposes for which you can actually borrow.
We could set us like fifty thousand dollars. And if we don't use them, just turn it back.
Right.
And spend free cash, we have, we have. If they don't use it, just turn it back in spring, I don't even mean, I don't, I don't even mean. Because.
You, so just looking at the statute, you know, you can borrow for anything that has a maximum useful life of the public work, the improvement or asset being financed. That has to have a useful life not to exceed thirty years. That's why I don't think relocation costs can be borrowed. It ultimately won't be me, it will be bond counsel on this one, and this is.
Labor costs that are part of installation or part of the bond.
Because that's considered part of the renovation or the construction, yes.
If you're taking equipment, relocate one building to another unwiring and rewiring to another building. One might say that that's all it is, it's not relocation, it's. It's installation.
I understand, however. I don't want you to wind up, I don't want you to wind up where you can't use it.
Fifty thousand for relocation, so we should do one time.
Or just put that.
One time, free cash, free cash, right now. Because we think it's going to happen in March, that will be for annual spring meeting. And then. That will just, again, reduce the tax increase.
Yeah.
So we'll just look for opportunities wherever we can, so ironically, this probably worked out. In a certain way. Okay. Alright.
So do we need to vote on anything tonight, or are we waiting for another select board meeting to vote?
So I guess the question that I would. You, Chris and Carolyn, is given these solutions that are now on the table, including. One time free cop, free cash for relocation costs. The later repair costs for Elm Street. It sounds like now we're just looking at borrowing articles that are solely for. The acquisition and renovation of these two properties. So in light of that, do we think now that these questions and the associated warrant articles are? Appropriate and sufficient?
If we add in design and renovation to each, to questions one and two. So it would be the acquisition as well as the design and renovation. Of the property located at.
And where will we add in the acquisition? Uh, excuse me, the renovate, the design and when we.
Bonds, so I would say in order to pay for the bonds issued in order to acquire by gift purchase in or eminent domain.
Okay.
And to design and renovate.
Okay. So it sounds like Carolyn, based on your extensive municipal experience, you are comfortable with. Articles eight and nine. Providing us with what we need.
Yes.
And the associated language of questions one and two.
Yes.
Even though one and two. Doesn't necessarily contain all the language of, let's say, the renovation for the police and fire station, but still legally sufficient.
Yes.
And is it fair to say that there's nothing that would change if we held a select board meeting later on, on Thursday or Friday, that would change your opinion on one?
So the only thing that would change would be. The the timing for the town clerk and the days ticking away.
Okay. So nothing would change for you, it would only change for town.
Right.
Alright. In light of that. Would anyone like to make a motion for questions one through four? As identified on the special town election warrant, do we need to read them aloud? For purpose of go the record?
You don't have to, but you certainly could.
You probably should. I can do it, or if someone else would like to do it, you're welcome to do so.
This is not already in the record.
People watching. For the election questions.
Okay.
So regarding special town election warrant for Saturday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to either of the constables in the town of Cohasset in the county of Norfolk. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town. Cohasset qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at the Cohasset Town Hall Auditorium, forty-one Highland Avenue. In Cohasset on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, between eight AM and six PM, then and there to vote in the following questions. Question one, shall the town of Cohasset be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half? So-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to acquire by gift purchase and or eminent donate domain. Parcel plan located at one Pleasant Street Cohasset Mass, containing point eight six eight acres, more or less identified as. Assessors parcel E five dash eighteen dash zero one eight, and being the property described in a deed reported. The Norfolk Registry of Deeds and Book four zero three eight eight, page five sixty-five. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related there too.
So could I make one addition there? So right after we said to. So could I make one addition there? So right after we said to, um, in order to acquire by gift purchase and or eminent domain, could we add in there and to design and renovate the parcel of land located at One Pleasant Street and all the rest would remain the same?
Yes. You can.
And then we'd like, need to make a similar end to question two.
Exactly.
And that comes right after the party?
Comes right after eminent domain.
Eminent domain, okay. All right. Do you want me to read it again or no?
I don't think you have to read that one again, no.
Okay, question two, shall the town of Cohasset be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called? The amounts required to pay for the bond issue in order to acquire by gift purchase and or debt uh, eminent domain and to design and renovate a parcel of land located at one thirty-five King Street Cohasset Mass containing one point eight, seven zero acres more or less identified as assessors parcel C six dash seventy-two dash zero, zero, six, and being the property described in deeds reported the Norfolk Registry of Deeds and book two, one, four, one, one, page four, fifty-nine, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Question three, shall the town of Cohasset be allowed to assess an additional one million, five hundred thousand dollars in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the school capital stabilization fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty, twenty-three? And question four, shall the town of Cohasset be allowed to assess an additional eight hundred thousand dollars in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the roads and sidewalks capital stabilization fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty, twenty-three?
So Ms. Moore, is that your motion to, um, approve questions one through four, including what the, uh, edits that Congress suggested?
Yes, I move we approve questions one through four as amended by council.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're looking to the special town meeting warrant.
Chris can take it away and then take it to the page one and.
I'll give you the revised page one in the morning.
There's five cards.
Um, while I sign, Chris, do you want to begin with the special town meeting warrant articles and any updates? I see Mr. Callahan in the audience. I don't know if he would like us to review the zoning articles.
Good call.
So we can get them out of here a little bit earlier, although they may have to continue looking at the warrant as of late.
Probably good to jump out of that. I, I, I will say that we went back and forth a lot, Gary, so originally there was forty pages of material and condensed. So, uh-huh. Which is a lot easier, I think, to swallow from a printing.
Is there a new draft? My last one, I think, was
Oh, yeah.
The tenth. So, I'm sorry, the sixth, October sixth.
You have your electronic.
My computer's done, so. Thank you, miss. Thank you. Thank you. Not me too.
Yeah, I think so, probably just because. It must be one of which come over there, but he must keep up in the hour. Right, right, about right the hour.
We'll zoom right in on. No.
I'm gonna text Mr. Fenton to see if he can join a later warrant meeting in case he needs to.
He shouldn't, he's on a committee that's proposing it and he supports it. As soon as vote would change you.
I would like his, he's not here, though.
Are we back to articles five and six?
Yes, so. Well, back to articles five and six.
In, in light of what you shortened the warrant, where will the actual text of the articles be? Do you, do we need to prepare handouts for that?
Okay, um, so the articles those say, so what we took out with the, so an article four. Um, the use regulations, the full text and the article actually says the full text of which is on file with the office of the town clerks, so we need to make sure that it is seen with the office of town clerk. And I also put in an available online at, and we need to insert a link.
It's on the zoning bylaw committee's page and it should be on the planning board's page.
With the central special time meeting page, which are in the mornings.
Okay, well, I'll take a sandra about moving everything.
We have to move it, that link will jump right to those, it's just one point.
Well, I just, I mean, our presentation was mostly going to be these summaries as we did with the planning board hearings, and so that's what'll be up on the screen. I'm just concerned that if people don't have the text in front of them, because the zoning board of appeals stated that the other night, they were gonna vote and the final drafts weren't done until about a half hour before their meeting, so they didn't vote yet. Because they wanted to see the actual text, so I don't, you know, I don't want somebody objecting at town meeting if, if we need to print these out, it's a lot of paper, we'll do it.
So you don't have to put the full text in the warrant, you certainly can, but you don't have to.
What about the motions?
What we, what I would recommend, however, is that we have a handout at town meetings, again, ask people come in. They get the full text of those two articles. And you might still, the, the danger you run into there is someone who, this is the first time they're looking at it. But you're always going to have somebody who.
No, I know, but I didn't, for example, at the public hearings and everything, we had zero participants. I don't think as many people look at the town's webpages we like to think. And they're not dealing with modern forms of communication, so. Is the, I, I mean, I would recommend that the motions at least have, I know it's, one is twenty-eight pages and the other is twelve, I think, but.
The motion typically would not decide the entire.
Suggesting something.
We would either refer to the warrant article, or we will refer to the handout and that, we would incorporate that into the motion. But whether or not to include full text of this in the warrant is.
Could see how it goes, but I don't want somebody jumping up and down over that. You'll get the warrant, if they read it, they'll see the links. Easy to read, but I'll, I'll leave it to greater minds of mine, I'm gonna do this, but I don't want, it's time to tell me there.
So.
Anyway.
Okay. So Tom, where is the full art of, where the full text of that on the zoning bylaw?
It's on the bylaw committee page, it should be on the planning board page. I had to ask Cassandra to do it, I'm sure it's done.
So I'm looking at a twenty-eight page.
Article four is completely rewritten, so yes, it's gonna be long. And article five is.
I mean, like.
Yeah, article five is just long by its nature, but it's twelve pages. So, you know. I just don't want somebody jumping up and down, you know.
So.
There will be people who do it, because like I said, the zoning board of appeals knew what it said and pretty much, because we had discussed it like a week before, and yet we wanted to see the actual text with the changes we had all agreed to, so.
Yep.
It was two of the older and less technically astute members, like, you know, I mean, personally, I'd wanna see it too, just to have it, just that it's there, so. We're not gonna be flipping through twenty-eight pages up in the screen on the presentation, presentation's gonna be the summaries. And taking, taking questions as they come, based on what people see in the text.
So is the difference between the two approaches, that what we have here highlights the changes and only the changes? And the full text will include the portions that aren't changing?
What I'm quickly seeing is that should what I'm quickly seeing is that article four, for example, is printing out the changes in the same with the article five, is they're both doing the step twos, they're printing those articles and step twos in both phases are making definition changes. But the actual text of the two articles themselves and the amendments are not being printed. And if, if we want to depend on people relying on the technology, that's fine, that's the we better be prepared for the ex, you know, an answer at town meeting, if somebody jumps up and says, I didn't read it.
So for example, in, with respect to the changes to zoning article four, but it is article five in the warrant. We eliminate twenty-four pages of reproducing, like saying, the full text is on file to town clerk and on the website. But then we do summarize the remaining definitional changes.
So the.
All, all of that's in the article.
So the options for the board are to keep this hybrid approach, which is here's the link to the whole, and then here are the sort of critical substantive changes that are outlined, or we could just say here is the brand new full zoning article we propose, including just as you have right now on the website, Tom, for articles four and five. And that would be twenty-eight pages for article four and then for article five, it would be twelve pages.
And.
Yeah, actually, it's an addition of twenty-four, because it's probably four pages that's taken the rest of this stuff that you have included.
Right, so it's just.
So the actual, the actual text of article four itself is twenty-four pages, the actual text of article five itself is probably only a little of nine or ten.
What you're advocating would make it clear to.
I'm not advocating either one, I'm just, I'm just, you're finding by experience and trying to get people to participate. But not as many people are looking at online sources as one would hope.
So the alternative to what this is.
Is old fashioned and printed all that.
But it would include the entire text of the article with some clear indication that it was changing? Or would it just be the new version?
Just be the new version.
I would object to that severely. Because then you don't know what you're voting on.
You do, because the summary will explain it and the presentation will explain it, because we went through this at the beginning, it was impossible to redline article four.
Yeah.
And, and it's a ten-page summary that explains that article five was a lot easier and the working drafts, as we were working on it, had little boxes off to the side pointing out what was from the existing, what was changing, and the summary for article five is one page, it's much simpler.
To me, what's important is understanding what's changing.
Well, then that'll have to be on the presentation, and people want to wade into the weeds of the text that looked at it online, that's fine, I'm just just, we have to be prepared for the objections.
Yeah, if we were to provide it at town meeting, but not as part of the warrant, as an option for people to pick up separately.
That's fine, it's just.
I've got a thread the needle here between.
It's forty pages of printing times, however many members, people you anticipated telling me.
And again, to me, what's really valuable is understanding the summary of what's changing. If, if we think it would help if, for example, the zoning board of appeals clearly wasn't comfortable with not having a fully printed version, if we made the fully printed version available. And have the changes, I recognize that's killing a lot of trees, but.
Well, double, double sided, it'll be twenty-seven pages, forty-seven pages, but anyway, I mean, there might be times in answering a question that the judge or I are going to actually refer to the actual text. So.
So if.
We, we'll be able to flip that up on the screen, we'll have everything ready with Justin, but the main presentation piece is going to be the summaries, not the text itself.
If I may just make sure we're clear, so on article five of the warrant, we are repealing and replacing zoning article four in its entirety. So to the extent that you're asking for a summary of the changes, that's then going to be an additional ten-page summary.
I'm sorry to interrupt, this to me is a summary of the changes.
No, it's not.
But, but, but it really isn't, because when you look at paragraph A, you know, deleting the text of article four in its entirety and replacing it with a new one that we either print here or the new one that's going to be on file with the town clerk on the website. That's where folks will find this twenty-four additional pages of what is being proposed for the new article, article four. What it doesn't necessarily do is tell you so what does the existing article four look like? And what's staying the same, what's changing? That you'd have to go to the, the, the further detailed summary to get that. But then what's also built into the changes proposed under article five are about another five or six definition changes as well.
Yeah.
Those, like, those at least have been, you know, the new text is underlined and, um, anything you deleted is struck through so that you can visually see what is the current bylaw providing, what is the change proposed.
Yeah, it's, it's printed, the article, the article, I'll use your, article five has three parts to it. Article six has two parts to it. First one, the second two parts are fully printed, most article six, the last one is fully printed, but the, the meat of it, the actual article four and five of the zoning bylaw are not being printed, and you have to refer to the webpage, and that's fine if you think that'll work.
I, I think the goal should be to clearly communicate the changes that people are voting on. And I, my view is that.
The presentation will do that. The presentation and the summary will do that, and that's also, the summaries are also available online for people to read ahead of time. And that should be on the town meeting pages as well, the, the two summaries, but, um, you know, I, I we just gotta publicize that people need to read the website, you know, and, and read online, it's different world, you know. And it's not going to change in the spring, if we, you know, we have a lot of other articles of the bylaw, the bylaw is long by nature, and there's going to be some substantive changes, and we'll face this in the spring as well.
Ms. Moore. Um, I have a question for Mr. Senior. Um, and, and Carolyn, can informational summaries be attached to the town warrant and not be part of a warrant article when it gets mailed to the households? Because I, I agree with Mr. Callahan, I, I think that there's a large portion of, of people that will not oh, let me go to Cohasset MA dot org, let me navigate, let me find this, even though it's right there. A lot of people are not, they're, they're just, I'm a misfit on technology. So I think there's, there's a lot of people that won't do it, but you get it in the mail and, and I think a lot of our population is gonna read it, so short of the forty pages of the detail, can the, you know, what's the cost implication of mailing tho- those two with the warrant?
It's not a source of our cost implication, it, it's, it's if someone's gonna get a book in the mail, I'm afraid they're not gonna open it at all. Uh, and there's this huge amounts of critical projects here, and they gotta get, I think they can get entirely lost by.
Can, can it be sent separately?
Well, you, you could put it at the end, I mean, if you put it right at the end, I guess. You know, eh, but the, the problem is these articles pop right in the middle of the line, it's just like, if you're gonna stop and then you got
But, but as an addendum or, or explanation to articles, whatever they are.
It's not, not quite so lengthy.
Article five, five and six, so it, so it isn't in the body of the warrant, but, but it's, it's attached so that people can read the summaries ahead of time.
Yeah, you can make us an addendum and, and that's not a question.
And I, and I think.
Yeah, because we, we were gonna have the summaries as. Yeah, because we, we were going to have the summaries, the minimum of having the summaries is handouts to town meeting that everybody could pick up. But if, if they're, if they receive them ahead of time, that would probably be monumental help to explain them.
But so what I, what I'm thinking too, this conversation is leading me to conclude is the zoning articles need to be at the end. It's going to be too confusing to have this amount of information right in the middle that breaks up the flow of the warrant. And if we're going to have the summary, it would make more sense to connect it to the zoning articles at the end, which I realized we went through pros and cons last week, but as I look at this now, I just think it's, it's the way we need to go.
Well. The bylaw committee is pros and cons, and I kind of advocated for more at the end, but of course, there's the concern about the lack of the quorum, as you know, that two thirds of the meeting is going to walk out.
So it becomes a question of do you use your forum for the zoning articles?
Which would be, yeah, and then we'd have to come back the next night.
But do you come back the next night for the zoning articles or for half the warrant? I think that's what Jean is saying.
I don't think people are walking out of the zoning articles if you still got all these money articles on.
I think, I think we have to look at the big picture and probably put the zoning at the end, and it's a, it's a risk. Um, but it also just makes the whole warrant more readable and flow better, including if they do the summaries at the end, it just seems to make.
I know, but if that happens and we lose a quorum, I'm going to insist we do the next night, not put it off, because then you're going to make the spring unmanaged, I mean, this was the debate long ago about do we do the whole bylaw all at once, like nineteen fifty five, or do we break it up? You know, and we broken it up into three town meetings, possibly four. We can't keep doing this too much piecemeal with certain changes made and then long gaps before we make the other changes that are followable. So that's.
I don't, Jean, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would be an issue because people come in and they're going to get the motions. They'll pick up a handout if they don't bring it, I mean, I bring my warrant, but I get nailed with all my notes and whatever comes with it. And I think we can just reference when we get to these articles on the floor and say, you know, there was a handout at the door, you received this as an addendum to the warrant in the mail. And if you want to refer to it now, is the time to do so.
I just think it's misplaced in the warrant.
Yeah, for all the right, all the right reasons.
Well, the other question is, do you want, do you want people walking out of the meeting and having a fairly, yeah, Article Four is a major change to the bylaw, decided by a hundred people or less, or do you want it decided by two hundred people? Neither one of them is ideal, but you know that after you have your money articles, that there's going to be a mass migration out of there, like happened last spring. You know, and so far, we've received like zero public opposition to anything, nobody participates in any of our meetings, who knows, it just takes one somebody to fly in the air and say, I'm following.
Well, that's also because you've had zero people at the meetings, not a thousand. You've had zero people at the meetings, not the five hundred or a thousand who want to vote on a town hall, police and fire stations, like the biggest tax increase since nineteen sixty, and so that's what we're grabbing. That's the pros and cons, including you know, the, just the denseness of the zoning articles, I think, could be, it could just take an enormous amount of time in the middle of the money articles before we get to the articles that we need to also have what's on for special action.
Again, the, 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 the changes can be summarized fairly quickly, and they have been, we got through the planning board hearing in one night. And I didn't expect that, we only delayed it to a second night, so we had all five members on one article, but. It, it's not like, I mean, this might be just me talking, was used to this, but it's not rocket science either. And again, there hasn't been any opposition to this, we've had two citizens, you know, other than people who are on boards, we had two citizens show up at the public hearing at the planning board. They asked questions about accessory dwelling units, they were answered very quickly. Is it going to be, you know, are we going to do a presentation within Danny's five minutes? Article Five, we could, not, not on the other, but it's not also going to necessarily eat up a lot of time. If people, I think it would be a great idea to have these summaries ahead of time, then they'll see what it is.
What do you think, Chris?
I'm at my own time judging whether or not these are issues that we're going to get stuck on, regardless of whether or not we have information at the meeting. I'm concerned that if we're putting forth tens of pages of legalese documents, people are going to be concerned about what we're trying to sneak in, especially if we're not clearly summarizing what the changes are.
Well, here, there's no sneaking, as a matter of fact.
I understand that, you understand.
We're thinking that I'm not going to, I'm just going to do an introduction as the judge is going to get up there and take the fire and do the presentation, and if they want to accuse her of being dishonest and trying to sneak something, knock themselves out. It's, you know, there's, either we do this in one fell swoop on a separate town meeting, do the whole bylaw at once, or if this is the way it's.
How do you feel about that? You do the whole bylaw at once? I thought you wanted us to do.
That ship has sailed, we've already made the decision and they're pressing this out in pieces, so that decision needed to be made a long time. And it was done once, you know, at least once in nineteen fifty five, so. Probably done twice, there was significant changes in our past that were made with pages and pages of text in the old fashioned ways, so.
My biggest concern is that there can be opposition to zoning changes that can turn into obstructions that can bind up. Regardless of the material of the changes, regardless of.
Well, is, is there something that's jumping out at you that you think would do that? I haven't heard one yet.
No, but I also didn't expect that at the last town meeting, and there was opposition, there was a question of whether or not we're still at a quorum. So I, I'm just concerned that this is going to turn into something that comes up for us to.
If you want to ensure that people are at the meeting, that's the objective, then. And then, believe me, I, 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 amongst, in the zoning bylaw committee, I was the initial advocate for putting us near the, the end. Because more people in the room, I know from experience, is going to be more less educated people about this, who haven't been paying attention in the room, and that's dangerous. And, you know, and he is publicly saying that, but that's what happens in the reality of going to town meeting for thirty five years. But, um, somebody's going to challenge the quorum. You know, we need to come back the next night and get this done.
I think we need to prioritize the attention of the people that we have there.
Well, like I said, if you want more people to decide all the issues, then you keep them, the ones that are going to keep them in the room there later. Um, and almost known for the days of random selection, we went through a few years of random selection. Pick numbers out of the head.
That's not very strategic, though, um, which is what I think this board is, is trying to do, I think we recognize where you're coming from, I think you recognize where, where I think some of the concerns are coming from as well. I personally would like to move these to the back, I think that strategically is better for the success of the zoning articles and the rest of the articles as well.
When we, when we spoke last week, and, and, you know, there were five and six, and they're moving them back, I mean, looking at this, I wouldn't, you know, ten and eleven would be fine, but not thirteen and eighteen. We shouldn't be on the back of everything here.
If we were to move these articles to the back with a warrant and provide comprehensive information about the full text of the new version and the summary, and make sure those are available in printed form at the meeting and online. I'm looking for ways to find.
I'm, I'm suggesting not the backpack, like, not making these Article thirteen and fourteen. I'm suggesting making them ten and eleven. School environmental and site testing analysis, all due respect, that shouldn't jump in front of it either. I think the zoning is a more important issue, well deserved. Everybody here is advocating an article that they think is important to them, but, you know, so they have to advocate for them, we're, we're supporting. In the greater scheme of things, the zoning bylaws is just as much as important to the future of the town, as roads and sidewalks and other things. It's my view of it, but.
So I, I have another question, so we typically start town meeting at seven, correct? And we talked the last time, when we were talking about the sort of articles about, you know, it's a Monday night, it's a school night, the recreation babysitting only goes so long into the evening, and, and that's when we lose a lot of people as well, because they have to go, they have young kids. And I'll look to the, the parents of young children, since I don't have any anymore. Um, would a six o'clock start, is the dinner hour less objectionable than a late hour?
The, the balancing act is if your kids are at home and you're not going to be at home by starting at six, you take away from that opportunity, so at least for me, you want to catch the kids early in the evening or late in the evening, you don't want to miss both. By moving the meeting earlier, you're missing.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can manage it with the rec department, if they have, do they have like justice bond? Can they adjust it?
No, I, I know, I just, I was just thinking so, because, because that, that's another you know, point of why people leave, and we talked about it at the last meeting, is.
Yeah, and they're, they're going to leave whether we're eleven and twelve, thirteen or fourteen, they're going to leave.
It's the amount of time, right, the, the, like, you have your, you know, three year old at the rec place for three hours, four hours, five, you know, then we start getting into, I think, uh, if we did six thirty to ten, that's still a lot of time, that all could be, you know.
Might I have a wild suggestion, as long as you move one, two, three and four?
We talked about that.
And we want all the financial ones up as one, two, three and four, and then we're, we're kind of down at seven and eight, and that'd be fine. I don't know that anybody's going to challenge a quorum on a, you know, one, two, three and four. I mean, people will, and people will still walk out, and there's that risk for those articles too, but I think there's a less of a risk of a quorum challenge on that than there is on some, something substantive, if there is somebody out there who's got a bone to pick about the zoning bylaw or your, or your spending on this. Anyway, so do you want to get into the substance of it? So have your vote, your vote to endorse them, or that's what I thought it was. I don't care really, at this point, you've argued it to death about here, but.
Hold on, yes.
I, I hate to disagree with Tom, but I'm really leaning towards moving these toward the end of the warrant.
As long as I have your pledge, you'll convene the next night, if we don't have a quorum.
I'm hopeful that we won't need to.
I still appreciate the pledge.
Isn't that up to the moderator?
No.
The check the quorum?
No, to convene the next night, I'm not sure it's like Mr. Flex can pledge, so just.
You can, you know, the only way it comes up is somebody makes a motion to adjourn the meeting, and they don't, you know, you could, as leaders of the community, supposedly. And have it continue to the next night.
So let's just say.
It's happened in the past.
You know, Article Ten, and it's late, someone decides motion to adjourn, you'd have to then adjourn to a date certain to be able to come back and finish the, when we are.
So we could come back to, like, say, the following week.
Yeah.
You don't need to be the next night, we could give people time to prepare.
That's been, that's been, it's been like.
In the, in the past, we've posted for two nights, if necessary, posted Monday night, Tuesday.
Absolutely, we have.
We usually secure, I've never had to use one, last ten years, but we we secure just. And I, to go a following week, I think we need to set up and take down, yes.
Yeah, and then you're getting close to the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the following month is the.
Well, you can always just hope someone calls the question after. That a lot of.
Which I think. I would, I would, I would think, I would think after the judge's thorough presentation, that would be the case, because, you know. There, you know, there, the, the questions we got from the one member of the public are just really clarifying questions about what does this mean for accessory dwelling, that's not, I'm opposing this, no, this is a horrible direction to go. But, you know, nobody, I think, is going to complain about simplifying the list of uses that we have or any of the other things.
The, the most conversation I recall is when it really impacted commercial development and contractors in, in the past on certain things, and I don't think you'd want to be.
Maybe I'm going to jinx this, but we haven't heard word, word one from the minister on the last.
Mr. Flex, if you'd like to make a motion.
Uh, I would move that we move Articles Five and Six to the end of the warrant.
I'd second. All those in favor, please, but I.
Hi.
Hi.
At least not in front of eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I mean, give us a break.
We had a quorum last time through the end of the meeting, so, and I think that was a more controversial issue.
And I think this is, it flows a lot better if we're going to do big summaries after each one, everything fully loaded into the warrant, which I think the biggest issue is the one that I think is being identified, that people are going to, it's not that they think, I think that you're going to sneak something past, that we're going to sneak something past, it's more just lack of familiarity, and so I do think the summary will be good and helpful, but.
Can't help that, you can only help that to a certain point, so we should distribute summaries if we can ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah. Okay, so let's talk about the substance, um, Article Four.
Twenty four of the one.
I'm sorry.
Apparently now it's Article Thirteen.
Article Thirteen.
Well, so this is another, because I kept looking at Article Four, Five, Article Four.
We've been referring to them by the bylaw section, so.
So bylaw.
Bylaw, Article Four.
So can I ask, is the board's preference then, by moving these to the end, do you want to insert the full text of the changes in the articles?
I think we were thinking of, and please correct me if folks feel otherwise, making sure that's available, but not necessarily including it as part of the warrant.
So would we do, for example, in, instead of this, which I think candidly is confusing, let's do some of the changes, but not all of the changes? Although I appreciate the effort to try to do a streamlined hybrid, should we say essentially that it's to reorganize, update and clarify the provisions of Article Four, Articles in Article Two as available online and at the clerk's office here, and then we do the summary?
Could you that, another thought is, if you want folks to get this with their warrant booklet, we can do an appendix A and appendix B, it's appendix A, we can say the full text is also attached here to an appendix A, and then they can go and see out everything there, and then when we get to the next article, we can do the same thing.
And that's what we did last time, right?
Also, Tracy, I assume you've got the, uh, we are doing those little blurred summaries at the end of these things, which kind of hit those highlights. I think to go out to the public in the warrant, in the mail, I'd rather have the summaries in the whole text. I think those will be more.
What about both? I think what counsel is saying is you could do.
Do you want to send out a booklet, that's.
The summary plus appendix A.
You want to send out a, you want to send out a booklet, be my yes, but.
What, what we have to bear in mind, you know, is that all of this ultimately gets submitted to the attorney general, the end of the day for review, so she's looking for, you know, all of the items to check off the checklist, the legal ads, and she's also looking to see what was in the warrant, what were people reasonably warned of was going to be discussed. And the summaries, we've used summaries before and they've been accepted, but we've got to make sure that the summaries, you know, just hit the highlights, we've got to make sure that we reasonably say to people, it's Article Four, it's Article Two, it's a change to this definition, et cetera, so that. It's Article four, it's Article two, it's a change to this definition, et cetera, so that folks. Know what's in there. Uh, that's why I think the default position in a lot of, a lot of times is just put the whole text in there and then there's no. Way anyone can say that we didn't. Tell everybody exactly.
We actually ran into that issue recently, what the Attorney General and the navigation by law.
Right.
Including with the new office and their approach, and so.
And now that they're at the end. The difference between an appendix and including a full text.
Is really just semantics, I suppose.
And do the full text. At the town meeting, we will hand out the summaries as we planned. The summaries will be. The things we are referring to on the screen until there's a question about a specific. I anticipate, and you know, before I got here tonight, I anticipated the text was gonna be printed out as long as it is. So if that's the safe way to go. With the Attorney General, because that's the other thing where we can, um, and let's do the same.
Well, that's worth it. I would recommend, first, if we're going in that far, not such with summaries too, because people that look at this, I don't understand any of it. Let's just say, listen to the guide. It just works, right?
I don't know what your printing budget is going.
People here, it may benefit the bell box. People might be excited to get catalog.
It's a serious wish book. Literally.
I I guarantee you, people are gonna want more details on your spending articles than on this stuff, but I.
We have a website that's pulling up. I just can't put videos.
No, I know, and it's, and again, we we we're just not, my experience is we're not getting people to look at the website as much as they should be. And that's just a fact of life.
Or the printed warrant. But there's a form coming up a week from Monday.
Yes.
So I do the same thing with the course. It's coming up, I would continue to remind people. And they'll have no excuse if they're not reading, but it'll all be in this. I I would, again, this is what I was wanting to add, recommend to put the summaries in there too. That's at this point, just so they.
I I don't, I don't want to risk getting banned by the. I don't want to risk being banned by the AG's office.
The the summary is is not what's key. What what is key is that? What is in the article that folks know what's to be voted upon?
Yep.
I mean, we, Jerry sent those to us, now that we have the air summaries.
Yeah, the summaries, uh, did Cassandra give you those to distribute? I bet you did. Yeah, and they're also on the two pages to.
Okay, so the warrant will have the full text of both articles. And at town meeting, we'll have.
And the summaries.
And the summaries.
Do I would. Recommend just putting it in, because again, people that see forty pages of text, they're gonna they may just ignore it, but they want to understand it, then they have to go to some.
Yeah.
So I I think what's on the table is the summaries and the full text in the warrant.
Okay, and the summaries that you're proposing, Tom, is this the short? Informational summaries that you sent to Tracy, or is this the long ten page summary?
Well, for Article four, it's ten pages because there is a lot in there, so everything is explained to, you know, so whether we're explaining everything. Article five, not as substantive, so it's. Sure, it's one thing. Article, article. The summary for here, like when you get to the back, it's actually. Showing whole changes and categories, you know, side by side comparisons, because again, redlining was impossible, so it's side by side. And then the first few pages of it is explaining the changes in a little bit more detail, so. Well, anyway.
Then in the warrant article? Then just be as simple as. Zoning bylaw amendment, Article number four, use regulation. Refer to Appendix A.
Yeah.
Well, a- and then there's an informational summary. So we have summaries, we have informational summaries, and we have the full text. I mean. Then how how in depth does the actual warrant article? And therefore the motion have to be. It 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 might just be six of one, the other, because if you're, if we're going to put the entire. Uh, text, say, in appendix A.
Yeah.
Does it make much of a difference if we just put the entire text right here? Um, but the warrant article. I think should, for at least for the article. The amendment to zoning, Article four, we should reference. That it's a whole new article for, but also we should. You know, summarize the fact that there are also changes proposed to the Articles due definitions as well. The full text of which is reprinted as appendix A to the warrant, we could do that.
You have to explain that Article four has a three step. Three steps of changes and Article five has two steps. But you don't have to print them out. I think the, I think the warrant article itself can be short. Refer to the appendix and that's where the actual text. We can say texts and summaries are attached to the law, something like that.
So we could do something like an article, new Article thirteen of the warrant. But this is to see if the town will vote to amend the co-hasset, build the block, to update and reorganize and clarify the provisions of Article four and Article two. As set for. In Article fifteen. Okay.
It's actually amending Article four with. First required corresponding changes to Articles two and fifteen. The other one is amending Article five with corresponding changes.
So.
Necessitated changes to.
Um. Yes, I feel like we need to see this sort of. Specify like laid out and probably have another meeting just to. Prove. What?
Who's over here? Why don't you ask me? We, good old, leave, leave the wording to the lawyers and the town managers and and let's just get into the substance.
Agree, but I would suggest we at least close the issue of. In the warrant, is it a summary referring to the appendix, or does the warrant include the summary and the full text? Without necessitating. An appendix. I think council would say there's no substantive difference between the two. So let's just put it all in the warrant article. For both of those two warrant articles, the summary and the full text.
So long as it's clear to people that what they're looking at is a summary and the EG, what's a summary, and then what is the actual warrant article? Move it like. A legal language that were.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I know, but if, again, I'm a little worried, we've got a lot of info going on in the warrant, and so we're gonna have to. Work to probably do something like. Something where we say we're clarifying the provisions of Articles four, two and fifteen, and new Article four as set forth in appendix A, then we have an informational summary underneath saying. The summary of these changes is attached at the summary contained in appendix B. And then we do the next warrant article. In the same way. Or or something like that. I'm just like, we need something to hold on to.
But I think we've provided sufficient guidance to.
Yes.
Well, yes, but are we putting it in the article or an appendix? What's your? What you preference? I mean, I know we're gonna reprint the full text, it's a matter of. Does it go on page ten?
Since it's at the end, what's the difference? If you're making them Articles thirteen and fourteen, put the text of the actual articles in the. Warrant article itself. And put the summaries as appendix, appendices.
At the risk of extending this, I would have.
No, 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 yeah, I don't want the AGs jamming us up that the warrant didn't reflect what was actually being voted on, so. The warrant article will have.
Explicitly says the full text of this change is attached here too as a.
All right, it doesn't matter. You can make a short article and refer to two appendices, or you can do the article with the actual text and have one appendix be the summary. Doesn't matter. It's now thirteen and fourteen, so it's at the end of the booklet, so it doesn't matter.
And I wonder. I think we, I think we fix this whole Chris, I think. The bridge, it says, see if the tablet will come in, you know, the. Um, text follows appendix C, appendix B for some. Right at the top, the first couple of sentences, and that way they could, if people wanted to cut to the chase, they could go read the summary. And then everything coming after. Does that answer your question, Lilian? Comfortable following guidance.
Yeah. And I would, and I would keep in the online reference too, so that people.
Tom, and people, the online stop, it's gonna be you describing the whole thing, like a colleague.
Which I'm dying to be, yeah.
All right. Be fortified, so, um. Let's get into the substance. If you can describe in. Five minutes, the Article four changes, we see your summary.
Article four. Completely reorganized. Based on the diagnostic by KP Law and Judge Cutler. Basically, it was a mess. It hasn't been touched substantively or extensively in thirty six years now. It. Divide, it's it's our article about uses that are allowed, not found. It. Breaks them into categories now of principal uses and accessory uses, which are current by law and is not clearly distinguished between. It takes the table of uses and moves it into the article itself rather than having an appendix at the end of the zoning bylaw, so it's easier to find and immediately referred to. It consolidates. The uses into broader categories of uses rather than being nitpickingly specific and giant laundry list like it is today. We are also consolidating. Other use provisions that have been tacked onto the bylaw over the years, specifically. Are from Article seven, the common driveway. Provisions, that's a use type of use, category of use, that's being moved into Article four. Article fifteen, accessory dwelling units, that's a type of use, that's being moved into Article four. In the future, we may think of two others that might move into Article four, a diverse. On substance. We are not allowing things that we didn't allow before, we're not prohibiting things. That we allowed in four.
So if I can just clarify that. So there are no changes here that would change. Someone's ability to use property.
In the way they can today. And the.
They can use it for.
And the use, and then the use of broader categories does not get us into a nitpicking situation where. I believe it was in one of the. Kind of the kennel on three A originally was. Couldn't be done because it was so nitpickingly descriptive of what kind of doggy way to use could be done and what couldn't, so now it's. Uh, so it gives uh more flexibility to the building inspector more, and if there's a challenge to his determination. More flexibility to the zoning board appeals to deal with. The substantive change to common driveways is we're not changing the width, I mean, the length of it, but we are changing the number of properties that can be served by it from up to eight. To four. This is more in line with what other suburban communities do. We were. A complete and total outlier on allowing eight properties to be served by a common driveway. And then on accessory dwelling units, we are broadening. The opportunity to develop them. We hadn't seen many permits in this whatever fifteen years that the articles existed, fifteen plus years. One of the impediments was that you couldn't alter the existing structure. Well, now we're allowing for. Additions and expansions, still subject to zoning and setbacks and everything else, and we're also now allowing them to be. Uh, built in accessory structures, so over a garage or a shed or a new standalone accessory structure. Again, subject to all the other zoning requirements.
But that sounds like a change in allowed use.
Yes. It's expanding the opportunity to develop accessory dwelling units. We also made the change that. In the past, the permit for an accessory dwelling unit would expire. When the owner who saw it dies or sells the property, that has been taken out, so it can continue. And a new owner can make use of the accessory dwelling unit. I wasn't at that meeting, but I believe that. Comment and that suggestion came from your colleague. I presume possibly with sentiment of all of you, but uh. That was put in, a cap on the number of u- units that can be developed in a given year and overall remains. And the zoning board appeals had some issue with why are we keeping that, and the reason is because. It has been the longstanding policy of this town not to have multiple dwellings on properties, so the cap was in place so it wouldn't go wild. But with these changes on the availability to develop them, we have pledged the zoning board appeals and we'll review whether that cap makes sense going forward. I mean, we know that there's accessory dwelling units probably. All over the place, but they haven't been formally permitted under this process. If we see an increase in that and we see that there's a demand beyond what the caps are doing and the caps no longer make sense, the cap is ten a year. And then ten percent of the total. Housing stock of the town. And again, that the cap exists to control how many places in town we have multiple dwelling units on one wall. Which traditionally in this town and other suburban towns is not something that you regularly allow. So that's the substantive change. I, oh, we also had to develop. Provisions, and this is something the AG is hard to trot on. For. Ground mounted accessories, so we are zoning by law right now, the article, whatever it is, twenty. Deals with large solar arrays, and we have an overlay district where they're limited to. The one at the town landfill. We actually have never explicitly permitted. Uses on residential structures or individual commercial structures. We've allowed them, but. It's not set forth in the Bible. Attorney General wants us to set forth that catch. And so we have provision to allow for accessory ground mounted solar. Should pass, should pass muster with uh. The remnants, she is managing.
So ground mounted, I'm sorry to interrupt, that's not on the roof, that's on the ground, not to ask a stupid question, but so.
Yeah, and I I I through the whole process, I, on my way to my office, there's one on River Street in Orwell, they happen to have a giant lot, so they have the room for it, and it's a. On a framework, sets in the yard. X speed rides, bunch of channels, doesn't move. But we've also accommodated an article. The next article. For that one of our members pointed out that there's a type that opens up like a flower during the day and it moves with the sun, and so we've accommodated to allow for that as well. Look, I think those are the highlights of the changes, correct? It's largely organizational restructuring and taking the approach of. Broader use categories, and trying to consolidate. Uses from all over the bylaw into. One place.
Other questions aboard him? Well, Tom, not understanding the fact you thought zero people were at the planning board hearing, I did it then, and.
I said.
I appreciate that you've made edits.
No, I said real like, I said town officials, other than town officials, there were only two real people, the rest of us.
No, I just want to say I appreciated that you resolved the issue that I brought up, uh, which was the one that sort of jumped out at me, but otherwise. Um, I think this makes sense. I, once we address the logistics.
So that's a substance of, we have five zero votes from the planning board. I don't expect anything from the zoning board in opposition. Uh. The Affordable Energy Committee helped us with the solar parts of this. I don't know when, when or if advisor is gonna get to us, but.
Uh, one question about. The solar definition, and I hope this doesn't take us down a rabbit hole. The definition states a hundred and twenty five percent of current load. Would that mean that if someone's solar array? Were sized to generate a hundred and thirty five percent of load, that would be a separate. Definition, separate permitting process?
That number, you know, that's technical stuff. That number came, I believe, from the input of the Alternative Energy Committee.
Okay.
Um, that that's the appropriate thing to do, that these things aren't supposed to be generating stations. Basically, that. So they're supposed to be designed to be mainly servicing the property they're servicing, and then, yes, if there's a certain amount of overload that can go back into the grid, but. Not to have people in on an individual property scale.
Yeah.
Doing generating.
Like a crypto mining operation going on.
I use the utility for, makes planning much easier, so, yeah, no issue, just wanted to make sure.
That's where they're valuable and it came in, so thanks, I think that.
Okay, and your issue is gonna be a satisfactory, thank you. Okay, and your issue is going to be a satisfactory. Thank you.
You want to explain that?
Uh, yeah, no, um, my quote issue was that um we did make a change to the the darks to the use as it relates to lighting. Use must conform to dark sky principles. And and so that's already in our existing industrial. Bylaws, um but now this applies to all. All districts and I just um wanted to make sure that. This wasn't inadvertently requiring the town who does put up lights to like. You know, for example, um for the library, uh near the basketball courts to have to go hire expensive quote dark sky experts in order to do. Um. You know, some basic lighting that you typically do that's otherwise within the zoning bylaws. And so I appreciate that.
We we had never, we had never intended to invoke those principles and we're using dark sky with small that is not capital that is. Like to refer to the dark sky organization and its guidelines. And we made a one one other verb change, I think, that. Address, tried to address that, that we weren't trying to invoke any specific. The judge, I think, pointed out to you is that, you know, you're putting up field lights. You know, good neighbor rules apply to, you know, it it does apply to the town, but you know. The technology now is that field lights, and I noticed from a client's case in Hanover, that, you know, they point down and they point up into the field and. Try to minimize impact on neighbors and that's just common sense.
Yeah, I think everyone agrees. We just want to make sure.
Yeah, and and dark when, you know, whether the planning board and the zoning board, you know, when they get the opportunity to do a special permit or large one, or even applying dark sky principles for a long time.
Yeah, it's probably implicit in the special permit, if anyone's anywhere under twelve minutes. Um. So now, next step, um. I think. We're at the point of whether we want to make a recommendation now based on the. Language we have been discussing, including what Tom just described. Do people feel comfortable doing that at this point? On the warrant under what is now Article thirteen? And do we want to wait to see if we can do a select board meeting later, including to potentially get more select board members at this meeting? Um, to get a full recommendation of all five members?
It won't be in print, but you know, we're not all sitting on a zoning board in print entirely, so. Doesn't matter. We'll have the planings.
Yeah, I could post, we do post for Friday.
Uh, you know, at this point, the the planning board will be in, but will be in print. I don't think the rest matters as long as you get up and support. Or you allow me in the presentation to say this board, this board, this board.
Well, this might not just be a zoning issue. I think it might be specific or general to the entire warrant where the select board. Would like all of its members to be able to vote on all of these initiatives that are goals. Um, and you know, some are ill and they can't help it. Others are incommunicado um on on a business trip, so. Part of it is just to accommodate them. Um. I guess Mr. Flex and Ms. Moore, do we think at least the three of us, even if we could get the other two for whatever reason on Friday? We could do a meeting then. In order to get. The final vote on the filing warrant.
Yes, subject to the actual scheduling. So just need to make sure.
Okay.
Navigating potential conflicts.
Um. Unless people feel comfortable voting now, I mean, we could vote now and I could, we could, I could try to schedule a meeting, but at least we have the vote. And so for some reason, we can't schedule. At least we know we have the three of us.
Yeah.
Just on the off chance we have a scheduling issue. I'm I'm comfortable with that. We can do a peremptory though before the warrant actually goes to print. Right? If we needed to change and update the vote to a five O versus a three. You know, zero two.
I'm sorry, as you can. It'll be the motion back in the.
Yeah, although people tend to read the warrant, not the motion pack.
Be nice to have three zero in print.
So at the end of the. Sheen, it sounds like you're suggesting, if I understand correctly, we get the three zero tonight and we see if we can get it up to a four zero or a five zero on Friday.
Yep, that's what I'm suggesting. Let's at least have the three zero just in case.
Yes.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to? Um. Recommend to town meeting for Article thirteen zoning by law amend Article four use regulations with the language to read. To see if the town will vote to amend the Cohasset Coke chapter three hundred zoning. To update, reorganize and clarify the provisions of Article four and Article two and Article fifteen. To read as follows. And then we'll have the text of the new Article four. In place, followed by. The informational summary. Set forth in appendix A. Is that what we decided? Am I completely correct? Okay. Would anyone like to?
So moved.
Second. Just to be clear, the text of the article, the Article four's changes. Step two, Article two changes, step three, Article fifteen. And the Article fifteen changes basically to eliminate Article fifteen and consolidate it into Article four.
And this is all as set forth.
Yes.
On the website that I'm looking at with the final article for. Yes.
So three step, three, three things are done in the one.
And Tom, I would ask for you to work with Carolyn and Chris to get the the full, complete version, just to absolutely make sure we're on the same page and then we will review it. And confirm.
Pretty certain we have it.
Okay.
All right, so we need a vote.
Okay, so we have motion and a second. All those in favor, vote aye please.
Aye.
No one's opposed. All right, now we move to Article five.
This is this is much easier than the one way of summary, but. Uh, a lot of Article five is housekeeping and reorganization. Um, see, the first bullet is reorganized and edited primarily for clarity and consistency. There are edits to terminology that Article four is generating that have to be carried over. Similar as to Article four, we are taking the actual table. Uh, now it's called area regulations, changing it to dimensional regulations, moving it into the text of the bylaw rather than a separate attachment. That table had a whole bunch of notes to it. Those notes are being now moved into subsections. Rather than a separate note, so they're being moved into the text of the article. And then again, this is generating a number of definitional changes to Article two that we pretty much set out. The the substantive changes. There are very few, but you know, if we deal with substance, I've said this and I'll say it again, if we are going to deal with substance such as frontage setbacks area. House size. Those are, if we address those, those will be the spring. The substantive changes, if any, and I emphasize the if any at this point to Article five would be in spring. But. The regulation we have about clear sight lines on a corner lot that has been clarified. And we actually now have a sketch to go with. A large house review, we are. Changing the definition of residential gross floor area to bring in more. Elements of the. Structures, structures into that definition.
To like.
Most house garage. Yeah, because we are starting to see projects. Well over five thousand square feet with anywhere from four to six car garages. So with that change of expanding the scope of what's included in our GFA, we are also increasing the trigger from thirty-five hundred square feet to four thousand. So we will still capture quite a bit about what's being built today, but we are. That the limit should go up as long as we're including more. Area of the structures in the definition. Uh, we are putting in a twenty-five foot height limit for accessory structures, which we do not have in the bylaw today. So like your garages, if a garage has an ADU on it. Twenty-five feet. And then with a ground mounted solar, it's twelve. With the possibility for this flower system that it could go up to eighteen by special permit. We made those two exceptions for ground mounted solar. And then there was an unused section, and I believe it was just in residency, which is our largest residential lots. That apparently allowed for. Reducing the size of lot areas in a proposed subdivision. Based on the average. Of the lots rather than actually having them each be required to meet the sixty thousand square foot. Limit, so that hasn't been used, it's. Being eliminated. Zoning Board of Appeals is happy with, you know, okay with that because it says nobody ever uses this. We don't see a lot of subdivision. If people want to do something in residency and have smaller sized lots, we have a cluster by law that gives. But that's pretty much it. Article five is a lot of just housekeeping. In large part generated by changes to four, but also just to make it. More more clear than it is today. That's it.
I have a stupid question.
When you. There's no such things.
When you were here before and we were talking about this article and talked about the large home.
Yes.
Whatever. What's that definition? Because I couldn't find it in the table of definitions.
The definition of what?
Of the of a large home, you you said.
Well, it's the the definition that's in the definitions is residential gross floor area. We we have multiple definitions that are. Scarred floor area, and that's something we have to address at some point. There will be further debate on large home about whether it lives or dies, but for now we're amending it. To capture more building area within the definition of what residential gross floor area is.
Okay.
And then large home by itself isn't defined, but it's defined by what's the trigger threshold for the review. Which was thirty-five hundred square feet. Of residential gross floor area. Now it'll be. Four thousand square feet of the newly defined residential.
Thank you.
Question. Um. And is the change with the accessory structure to twenty-five feet, does that include lighting structures?
No, lights.
I thought that was thirty-five. That's the thirty-four is the height of a.
I mean, there's some that are even higher than that. But. The accessory structure. So we have. Always, again, there's still footnotes to these things. Um, so for height. There's there's the accessory freestanding sign is fifteen feet. In some places, accessory freestanding sign is fifteen feet. Your your light structures, I think, have their own exception. I think they know this high is seventy in cer- circumstances.
I don't want to touch it before I just want to make sure. I understand the change.
No, we're not eliminating large structures or fuels.
That's what you.
Oh, yeah, so here, not understanding the height of the mission. The zoning board appeals may grant a special permit to allow light poles and lighting facilities to be erected to a height of seventy feet in the highway business and light industry districts. For the sole purpose of illuminating athletic fields around sporting events. Otherwise, in in um. I think otherwise, just generally, I think it's smaller than it can have.
And so if we went to beach, would that be residential?
Beachwood, with beachwood field.
Yeah, that's the residential district overall part.
Might be downtown business. Those aren't sitting.
No.
And they'd be granted.
But they are the one that.
They're also granted.
Well, alumni field isn't in highway business, right?
That's right.
On the street. Alumni field, that's residential.
Well, that's the town you can. You're not really, the town's properties aren't really covered by them.
Okay, um. So now we're at Article fourteen, and I believe the language.
You keep.
I'm just trying to hit it clear for. Minutes. So this is zoning by law amend Article five dimensional regulations. To see if the town will vote to amend the Cohasset Coke chapter three hundred zoning to update, reorganize and clarify the provisions of Article five. As set forth in the text below. And then we'll have an informational summary that's helpful. Oh, excuse me, and Article.
See if the town will update, reorganize and clarify the provisions of Article five and Article two.
Would anyone like to do a so moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tom. All right. All right, might I suggest um we, Chris, unless you stop us, let's just go through to recommend each article.
True.
So set forth in the warrants. With a huge week based on what we talked about earlier with respect to police and fire and town hall or just down here. So Article one, would anyone like to make a motion to recommend town meeting in the form presented to us here in this warrant article?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
We've got no bills. This is Article three stabilization funds to appropriate three fifty of free cash to OPEB, five hundred free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Um. Uh, what I want to draw the board's attention to is that uh we are flagging that the second appropriation sets aside funds in the capital stabilization fund that would be available for repairs to historic town hall as well as other necessary capital projects to be voted at the annual town meeting. I think here, Chris, would we have to um? I'm sorry, Article four is going to be the allocation where time costs for relocation.
I I had a, I had a question about that.
Okay.
Why is that specifically highlighted? Other than messaging to people who are asking what's going to happen to town hall?
I think that's the reason. In order to highlight that. We anticipate in the May annual. Town meeting session to begin making repairs.
Does that disproportionately prejudice capital budget committee? As they weigh the laundry list. Of items. That are going to come before, because what we've already said. Available for repairs to historic town hall as well as other. It's not such as the historic town hall, but to the town hall, so half a million. From their budget out of their one point nine.
No, 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 this is separate. This is, and this is a, this is an additional half a million dollars. So this is.
Because they're going to get two, two, four.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is pre cash.
Yeah, they were.
Add on, this is new money. They didn't have any. This is not taking out.
Did we talk about this?
No, you're talking about it tonight. So free cash has been certified. So this is one of those last minute things. So free cash has been certified. Um, we're two point four million dollars certified roughly. Um, the warrant spends one point five million dollars or allocates, I should say, one point five million dollars, squares, but it's actually one point five five in second. At least about nine hundred thousand. For the spring, which is good to do because you don't know what's going to come in spring. So to get to, so we had, we had allocated a meeting, so. Uh, the conversation was, well, first, one of the first things, money should go to capital. The board had wanted to make a statement, so this is my recommendation to put a state, half a million dollars goes there.
We could do such a.
Which for?
My wish to you folks is that half a million dollars be out. You're, you're going to set the terms. This is slightly, I'm recommending that five hundred thousand be put into free cash, from free cash to capital stabilization. It happened, anytime we have extra money, we typically will lay a cap. So.
Yeah.
So I recommend, I have to lay a dollar is a substantial lot of money.
Yeah.
And it puts us a a jump start upon the spring. I mean, you're not spending anything, but it's, it's already blocked in, so there'll be a two point four million dollars. Well, Chris, if I understand correctly, it's not ex- exclusively for historic town hall. But no, this was a consultation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To to signal that. Yeah. It's there, it could be.
Yeah, we're going to start what, doing what we promised, which was, what, what, what we've been talking about, which is. We're going to start responsibly maintaining this building and making repairs, you know, sort of low hanging proof repairs as we. Continue to figure out what's happening with the building, because I know there's a lot of people that are worried that. Where. Uh, we, we may just like, forget about it, right? But we could put such as, Ellen, if you're concerned about.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just, you know, kind of surprised by this, because I mean, we have talked about it, we talked about. You know, the, the historic portion of town hall, you know, CPC funds at some point, grants and everything. Because it's truly the historic portion, I mean, is capital signed up on this, that half a million is, is pre allocated?
You know, it's not, this is, I want to be clear, this wasn't pre allocated. Uh, the motion will not lock it into town special to, to start that home. This is just signaling, and matter of fact, if you want, you want to use the word, would, could, could be available. Because it, the money will be available in the spring for allocation. And one of the projects could be used for.
Yeah, so we would separately put it before capital and say, hey, we want to do windows at. The historic town hall, so we do a separate vote, line out a vote for that. We're giving you two point four million, assuming town meeting votes for it. Let's to begin setting some extra money aside, and, and, and I, I would just say that it is my firm belief that the select board should be driving some of the priorities of what we do with capital. Including for gentle historic town hall, and, and we should be saying, this is what we want on the warrant capital, yea or nay.
And, and are we limiting ourselves to historic? Because we've had, you know, conversation, Chris, you've talked about, you know, basic maintenance for the annex. That perhaps it can be a, um, staging area for departments that are moving and shuffling around, and so, um.
Ellen, I have the same reaction. But I, I think I take comfort from the language where it says, as well as for other necessary capital projects to be voted at the annual town meeting, so. Uh, my read of that is, this really has no teeth. But it does indicate, uh, preference from the select board's perspective, that some portion of that. Be used for repairs to historic town hall.
I mean, what we could say is the second appropriation sets aside funds and the capital stabilization fund that would be available for capital needs such as. To the existing town hall and other necessary capital projects. Um, to be voted at annual town meeting.
Well, I, I would take the word historic out, because then, then we're limited.
Yeah. That's a good. You put existing, just to like.
Two, two, two town hall, forty one Highland Ave. It exists, it's, it's, people know it's already there, um.
People might say, what are you talking about?
That's why I said existing. Is the, the current town hall?
I, I would just put. Set aside funds and caps. Okay, so would you, so. That for funds that would be available. For necessary capital projects. Such as repairs to town hall forty one Highland Ave to be voted at annual town meeting.
Do you want to do another necessary capital projects to be voted at annual town meeting?
Yeah. I'm just saying, look, I, I don't want words with this too much, but.
I mean, it's just, it's just the informational, sorry, doesn't really.
But I think that's what people need.
Yeah. That would be a bit feeling good.
Oh, sorry.
The second appropriation sets aside funds of the capital stabilization fund that.
Oh, okay. That would be available. For capital projects. And or repairs to town hall forty one Highland Ave. To be voted at annual town meeting.
You want to be that specific?
You, you don't want to do such as?
Or such as. Such as.
Cap measures and, and repairs such as.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. You're okay with the number then?
Yes.
Capital should add it. What if I were to say increase?
That's true. Okay. Uh, would anyone like to recommend article three to town hall subject to the, um. Edits to the information, sir, summary, this more just discussed?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye. Alright, so now we have to add. Free cash for.
Town hall, I put town hall relocation. Uh, fifty thousand.
I do have one question.
Just so I'm, I'm linking it. The eventual number that will appear in article, in the motion at article. Town hall. Um, will be eight, six, five, oh, in that place. It's eight, seven. It was ten, less one point three, and it's five.
Well, and I did, I think before we. We get to the renumbering, I actually think we should move the CPC article after town hall, not to totally mess things up, but. It just might make more sense to do it after we go through the merits of town hall, and then we get to, okay, how are we going to fund it? If people who fundamentally agree on one pleasant, then the question then becomes, well, do we do the CPC funding, the one point three million? Which I think may be an easier discussion rather than sort of backing into this discussion on town hall. Vis a vis concerns about CPC recommendation of one point three million. If that makes sense. So then that would mean that the, if people agree that the town hall article would then be article seven, because it would move up before the CPC recommendation. Oh, yeah, as we change the other guys.
Do you want to finish four?
Yes, please. I, I have a question, um, so there's twenty five thousand for cemetery software program for data management and implementation. How is that different than special town meeting? December twenty twenty one, we had free cash for eighteen thousand dollars for cemetery records upgrade.
That was literally going through the hard copy records and cleaning them up.
Okay.
This is to digitize.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Okay, do you want to make a motion? Um, I think we need to add.
We did, I'm adding a fifty thousand free cash town hall relocation.
And we need to add that, uh, into the informational summary, the fifth transfer of funds. The, the fifth transfer. Funds, the cost to relocate. Equipment. What is it, relocation and moving costs for?
From the cost of. Who funds the relocation and moving costs?
Of the current town hall at forty one Highland Avenue to one Pleasant Street. If. Article, whatever it becomes. Is approved.
Sure, five passes.
And, and we want the election, the ballot.
And question, what? I'll write something that sounds logical.
Alright, subject to Chris writing something that sounds logical for that, and for making a summary sentence. Would anyone like to make a recommendation on article four?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
And then, so town hall first, and then CPC second.
So with CPC, uh. You know, I, I think the board has had some feedback on. The affordable housing. Recommendation. Including from others like the Affordable Housing Trust that are. Querying. Whether this money i- this recommendation is the best use of funds or some. Future project that they may be involved in, uh, you know, later date. And, and so I know that there's been some, some back and forth on that, um. You know, the select board has already weighed in that. For a variety of reasons, you know, we, uh, recommended this amount to CPC, and they have graciously recommended it. But I do want to acknowledge that I know that's out there, uh, and so. Um, I did want to raise it with the board, including when we consider warrant article order. That. You know, certainly it is possible for the town hall article to pass. But then the subsequent concern about the CPC recommendation and how it gets funded is a, is a secondary issue, it's related, but it's secondary ultimately. At the end of the day. So I just wanted to throw out there whether we should move the CPC recommendation to later. And the warrant to really address the full merit of, is this an appropriate place for town hall in addition to the affordable housing and. The CPC's recommendation, which is. Important, but not the whole picture. I don't know, folks have thoughts on that.
A cart and a horse or a chicken on an egg, I mean, it's.
I'm not motivated by the argument that, uh, this is money poorly spent for the affordable housing units. It is money for affordable housing units, I. I would challenge whether or not. The money spent on different affordable housing units would be better spent by these funds that are designated for affordable house. And I'm happy to have that conversation with. Advisory or capital budget or whoever else may raise that concern, but this is money for affordable housing.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just raising the measure.
Happy to have the conversation, but to me, this is still money for affordable housing that happens to be a part of town hall project, which I think is in the best interest of the town. And the goals of affordable house.
You know. I, I, I think, I, I think it's, you know, there, there's some process concerns or, or whatever, but at the end of the day. It is what it is. And to, to echo Mr. Flex, it's for affordable housing. I mean, how anybody could say that's wrong. Is wrong, I, I, you know.
Oh, I, I don't think, I don't think the argument is that it's not for affordable housing, it's whether, you know, there's a better use for some later future unnamed project. And I think that that's, in, in whether it should be used to fund the fund, the Affordable Housing Trust as compared to. This project.
If I could make the same argument from a different angle, uh, not every town hall project includes an affordable housing component, this one does. Town hall projects don't have to include affordable housing. Components, this one does, I think that's good, and I think it's an appropriate use of these funds to support affordable housing that happens to be part of the town hall project.
And, and it's a, it's a short thing compared to potentially something in the future that may or may not. Happen as regards to affordable housing.
Well, and certainly, this is something that CPC has long considered in terms of allocating a significant amount. Towards resolving our town hall issue. When I was on CPC. Um, there was, you know, a, a. A discussion that occurred throughout the year about whether we would allocate two million or four million. For the historic portion, and so now we're down to one point three to. Um, try to help provide an immediate fix now, you know, we still have our existing town hall that we're looking at, but at the same time. Um, it's not a surprise that we're looking to CPC to help fund the town hall project. Because historically, we have. You know, mentally allocated with the hope of the recommendation funds that were significantly less, and in fact, I believe last year. At the April town meeting, the recommendation was two million in CPC funds for the historic town hall portion. Um, so net wise, we're far below what we thought we were going to be doing anyway with CPC funds, potentially if. The prior project passed. But I just wanted to raise it because I do, I do think that there's, um.
I think it's a fair discussion to have, and if there's a forum where the discussion can be had further, I'm happy to participate in that forum.
Yep. Well, you're in luck, because you're going to have that on October twenty fourth.
Looking for.
Miss Murray, attorney Murray, I know you're trying to get in here.
Part of your concern that possibly under the CPC article, that someone may. Vote down the one point three million portion of it for one Pleasant Street, is that? Is um, tuning into putting the town hall article first, or?
Uh, my, my concern is just that there's, there could be like this whole argument about CPC and what that money is used for. That ultimately detracts from the bigger picture of whether or not this is a sensible decision in terms of voting the bigger project on one Pleasant Street. Um, I think if people understand and recognize that one Pleasant Street is a sensible purchase all around, all things considered. Including as it relates to our town hall functions and the costs we know of the existing town hall renovation as compared to this new solution. I think that that, um. Is probably going to have to come out, but in the context of article seven, because it's all going to be fleshed out as compared to a more. Sequence presentation of a town hall, and then how do we fund it?
One thought, you know, if you were to put the town hall article before the CPC article. We could, in the motion. We could put some language in, because what you notice in article, what will become article five on the town hall. We didn't put a dollar amount in the article, and that was deliberate, because a lot of things were, uh, still in flux. If most could be. And I'm just tossing out like ten million dollars as the total, I know it's a little different. But the motion could be to appropriate ten million dollars under article five. And we add in some language to say. To be reduced by any amount appropriated under article six of this town, you leave community preservation. So, in other words, if. Someone stands up before a town meeting and makes a real strong argument against using CPA funds. Towards the, the person on Pleasant Street. We aren't then scrambling at the last minute to say, okay, now we've got to add that one point three million. Into the motion for town hall, and we've got to do a motion for reconsideration or whatever. We could appropriate the full amount under the town hall article, put that caveat in about. Um, to be reduced by any amount appropriated under the CPC article, and then vote the CPC article after town hall.
Um, I think it, it protects both options, but I think as a taxpayer, it's like, well. If article five now is before CPC. And, and am I going for, for ten million, or am I going to do the math and I'm, and I'm going to vote for eight point seven, I'm not clear.
So if we switch the order, so that the town hall article comes first.
Yeah.
The motion would read that we appropriate the sum of ten million, so the total amount, assuming CPC is going to get swan set, right? But we, we further say, provided however, that this amount shall be reduced by any amount appropriated for this purpose. Under the CPC article six. under the CPC Article six.
But couldn't you do that for a worse? So CPC votes, this article, the, the motion says the same thing following. If money was allocated prior article, it comes off. Doesn't really matter what the order.
Well, it does only as far as if we're passing out motion booklets.
We can, it'll say 10 million less any money that was allocated in Article. And then that would automatically have happened. The moderator can say, and say, well, that vote was for 1.3. So it's now I'm just, I'm just process. I think you can get same result either way. Just giving you thoughts. I know it's late. I shouldn't be getting them.
Would the board have a preference whether CPC or town hall goes first? I think we can park it either way.
I don't think it's strong dependent.
No, I don't, I don't either. I do think Carolyn's suggestion is correct. We have to put in both amounts regardless of the order of the articles. I, I, so I think if, if town hall is first prior to CPC, I think there's going to be a lot of conversation on that. Which may or may not make, well CPC isn't all or nothing. I mean, it's not, it's not like people are voting each of the four projects. If town hall doesn't pass CPC comes up for projects one through three, because our projects, one, two, and four, right? Because why would, why would people vote for a project three?
Yeah, it's sort of
if our, right, if Article five doesn't pass.
And there, there could be some folks who, if you put the CPC article first, look at this and say, well, you're being awfully presumptuous, aren't you? You're assuming that the, that we're going to approve the purchase of one pleasant street. We haven't done that yet.
So it sounded like we're putting town hall first.
Yeah, I think we should put down, yeah. If we switch eight and seven, then I suppose in the informational summary, instead, we just say project three relates to the acquisition of one presence Pleasant Street that as set forth in the prior article. What is it now? Five? The town proposes to purchase for town hall function and working level, blah, 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 blah. All right. And it's contingent on a successful passage of subsequent Article five, not eight. Or prior of the prior. Yeah. So then we don't need to argue about CPC if Article five doesn't pass and we can just proceed onwards. All right. So I guess town hall. So that's now Article five and CPC is Article six. So let's do Article five then, because that's next in line with town hall. Carolyn, I believe you advised us to add in here renovation.
Right online. At the very end of line six, right after the, the phrase money for the acquisition, we would add in design and renovation.
Okay. Design and renovation. Does anyone have any further discussion on Article five, including the information summary? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to recommend Article five to town, to town meeting in the form before us with the addition of design and renovation as recommended by Attorney Murray? Second, all those in favor, please go down. Okay, we're at Article six now CPC. Here, let me change this word that I would suggest is in the informational summary. And Chris, we should just do like a consistency edit for information versus informational in the header. But just to change, instead of subsequent Article eight, it's prior Article five now. It's going to be after. So would anyone like to make a motion to recommend Article six to town meeting with the edits that I noted as to Article five versus? Second, all those in favor, please go down. Now we're at Article nine, police and fire. Is there any discussion or questions? We need to add in in the one and six acquisition, acquisition and design and renovation. And Ms. Murray, I know that we had also invited you here for the purpose of discussing the affordable housing units and the process under mass law and all that. I think we're probably going to need to table that for tonight.
That's not a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna keep moving.
Can, can we change the title of the article from police and fire to police and fire annex? Since we have now pushed the, I, I don't, there's, I think people get confused when we say police and fire. We, we heard several questions like, so where is fire going to be? So if we just do police and fire annex, and especially since we're moving renovation cost of Elm Street.
People think it's a police annex.
Police headquarters and fire annex. Or police station and buyer annex.
I would also suggest we strike out, the projects will also allow for modest renovations at the station on Elm Street to provide better operational space for the headquarters of the classified department. We'll strike that out and we'll just address that specific line item, which we think is pretty modest anyway.
One more nip.
Yes.
End of line two. The word headquarters, maybe headquarters. When I call it an annex, it's supposed to be a satellite station.
You know, annex is kind of a dirty word in this town with the town hall. So we'll change the title to satellites. Sorry.
Police headquarters and fire satellite station. I've said, we actually, that's the language we used in the
In the summary, right.
So people knew it was a
Satellite.
It's, it's a satellite. It's not connected to the mothership.
Advisory did recommend.
Yep. Thank you, advisor. All right. So with those changes, police and fire satellite station, adding in, and design and renovation, adding in headquarters with an S and striking out the sentence that starts with the project will also allow for any further changes? No. Okay. Would someone like to recommend Article nine in the form I just described? Seven, sorry.
A second.
All those in favor? Now at Article eight.
So I only had one comment here in the informational summary on the third line. I read from the end of the second line, will allow the town to maintain its 37 miles of public ways. I, I think we're clear. We're not going to be able to maintain this is, we're going to address some of the needs. Like we're not going to get all 37 miles.
Will allow the town to maintain 37 miles of public ways according to a 20 year repaving.
That's a promise.
If we change that to better maintain.
Or, or to address. I just, I just say, I think when you
Better maintain, was it better maintain this?
No, to address its 37 miles of public ways according to a 20 year repaving schedule. I just think the word maintain is a promise.
You want to use the word address instead? And this is
Yeah. I, I, I don't know. I read it as a promise and I just don't think we should promise.
Do you have a recommendation for different languages?
I would use the word address.
I'm fine with the dress. Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that language.
Okay. With the edit of address instead of maintain, would anyone like to move to recommend Article eight, the road sidewalk stabilization fund to town meeting?
For second.
All those in favor, please vote aye. Right now at Article nine, school special purpose stabilization fund.
I had the same comment. This happens to be in the first line. Instead of need to, to address needed repair and maintenance work to meet. Again, if we're meeting our needed repair and maintenance work, that's a promise we're doing it all. That's how I read it.
Yeah. We're going to really begin to address it.
To address.
Um, all right. Would anyone like to make a motion to recommend Article nine, the school stabilization fund town meeting with the edit of changing need to address?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye. Okay. We are now at Article 10. So we've had a request here to change from school environmental and site testing analysis to preliminary feasibility study. Which is more transparent about what we're doing. It's not the full feasibility study, but it is the preliminary step towards the bigger one. I don't know if the board has any thoughts or edits on that.
Preliminary feasibility study. I think it's clear. Personally.
If, if the goal is NSBA funding that indicates our intent and that we see this as a step on the way. So I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Do you want to do school preliminary feasibility study?
Yes.
Renamed.
And I found, I found my notes. I think I might've been the one to suggest 400,000. The actual proposal was 335, 750.
Then I saw a new proposal from the school facilities committee that it looks like it was actually maybe more.
If you don't have an exact number, you can simply say it's a reasonable appropriate available funds, a sum for the purpose that you can lock in the amount between now and I mean, you could, you could amend it on the floor too. It's on danger of putting an actual number in warrant. It's in the language. Right?
Yeah. So you don't have, we don't say the sum of 400,000 or, and, or, or another sum.
Right.
Is there a new number?
So I'm looking at a feasibility study, the line item detail. I think this came from Mr. Earl's from the facilities committee that the feasibility study is now 295. If we take out the conceptual design, which we just, we said we wanted to do. And then we do the environmental and site testing, which is another 45. And then we have the site surveyor and the traffic study. That's an additional 57. So that gets us actually to almost 400 on the nose. 397. And so that's
Okay, I, yeah, I didn't have that. So. So I think of up to, Chris is the language that you would say up, up to or?
Or if we say available funds, the sum of 400,000 or a sum of money like we do in some of the other articles. So we leave our, leave it open. That we put the 400,000 out there so the town meeting members know what our ballpark is, but it may not be that exact figure by the time it gets to motion. Or we'd take the 400,000 out and just appropriate a sum of money.
You give 400,000 dollars then into the information. I definitely think we need a number some.
I, I, again, the only reason I say, if there's any question, it sounds like it might be some. If you put in the information, it's still there in front of their eyes. And if it's a change, someone will explain why it changed.
So if we put the, the words approximately $400,000 in the informational summary. Yeah. And then we were silent in the actual article.
I mean, my only concern with this is the school committee has already voted on it. Believing it's 400 based on the back and forward.
All right.
But what we could do is we could work with the school committee as well. I know capital has some questions that we could do a town manager motion later on if we wanted to change it, if we could reduce the price.
Well, if you added an extra line, you leave us 40,000 and say, or a sum of money after that. So you go, it makes it without like a amendment is easier.
But will we get people concerned it's going to go higher?
I know, and I know, I understand it. You can always amend on the floor.
Well, well, can you say not to exceed 100,000?
You can. I mean, the motion obviously has to be a set amount, but the article could say not to exceed 400,000. If you feel more comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with it.
Me too. And I think that if we have some back and forth in the interim and can lower the price and everyone feels comfortable with that, including the school committee, then we could do a joint motion on the floor to address that, which may be the path, the best path forward. Versus leaving it ambiguous, which could raise concerns in both directions. Which I think, you know, we should continue to address it. I
This is, this one's going to be contentious, I think.
Which is why we need to probably do more work to address it in the interim and then try to see if we can do a joint unified motion with as many states that this is possible and you know, keep working on.
Now Article 10.
Yes. So would anyone like to recommend Article 10 retitled as school preliminary feasibility study? As currently drafted. And I know we haven't talked about the informational summary. So maybe just take a quick look at that and make sure you're comfortable.
I'm comfortable with the language and in response to your suggestion, so moves.
Second, all those in favor, please vote aye. All right, Article 13, I'm sorry, 11 cemetery rules and regulations. So these are on file. Are we going to have a similar issue with the text being on file?
This could be a problem. I think it pages long is the problem.
Yeah. If I remember, it was something like eight. Well, the other thing too is the formatting was like book style. So it's four pages side by side, which makes it not impossible. Yeah, right. But I mean, if you put it as an appendix, we could do that as opposed to saying it's on file somewhere on posted in town website.
And we have to do it now. This article. Not yet anyways.
But this is not it's just a
But there's no urgency in terms of our ongoing town operations. You can say yes, if you have.
I, I, again, Glenn would say yes. I, I don't know that. I mean, we've been operating with the, you know, as we are for a while. The fees and shit. So we at least were updated on that. Some of our rights do not apply to state law. So they, they, but I don't think they're violated in law. It's like, it's like, so we need to clean up the line.
How do you feel about this one?
Would we be comfortable including the full text as an appendix?
We can do that.
What's another eight pages?
Yeah, we can do that.
The full text of which is instead of on file.
Or it was just provided here as appendix.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
It would be appendix A, this is our first appendix, and then.
Yeah.
The informational summary for the first zoning would be appendix B and then the informational summary for the second appendix. I don't think we need an appendix for that one, because it's one page, it would just be.
Here it is.
Okay, right.
We'll figure it out.
Unless we need the next article. Well, wetlands by protection bylaw revision.
Do we need to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Recommend as amended for our previous discussion.
Yes, Article eleven cemetery rules and regulations, vote to recommend that with the revision to be the full text of which is provided here at appendix. Whatever appendix council and Mr. Senior thinks is appropriate, I think it's appendix A, but.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Article twelve. Is this the only change?
Yes.
Does anyone have any discussion?
Move to recommend Article twelve as draft.
Second, all those in favor?
We need to clarify, has drafted is Article fourteen. To finalize this, you need to formally adopt them, publish the warrants.
Yes.
As voted.
All right, um, I would entertain a motion to formally adopt and publish the warrant. As specified in all of the warrant article votes we took tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye. It would be my preference if we could get the full board to vote. I know that Mr. Brady absolutely would have voted if he wasn't as sick as he is. Um, and I think that Mr. Creighton is on a business trip and I'm. I would imagine he would like to vote as well, and so I think it would be beneficial if we could have all select four members voting. I think the meeting could absolutely be the way to go.
Eight. Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight works for me.
That's fine for me. I'll check the call, usually calls and.
I got eight oh five.
Yeah, could we just post a meeting on um? Review and vote all articles, finalize and publish special town meeting warrant.
Yeah.
It's our seven twenty-five item. Um, okay. I think let's table the minutes. Is there anything else we need to do, Chris?
I think you really talked about all your updates. I was just gonna mention to people that. If I'm still watching, sorry, I got my food shot today for Mary Goodwin. And the, there are three clinics open to anyone who wants a public, a public shot in this room where we're filming. On October sixteenth from ten to noon, October seventeenth from one to three, November fourth from ten to noon. Very easy to do, uh, and uh, you come in, it'll be. Mary, I want to make that, because our slots available for all three of them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just, I just want to put out, keep an eye out, our recreation enhancement video coming out, we slept with tomorrow. Just keep an eye out for it, uh, when it's published and we'll, we'll send out a link to everybody. And the long term, climbing report was posted today. Uh, so.
Is that another special town meeting?
With it also draft one pager, yeah, which we should have on tomorrow.
Okay. Any select words comments?
I'm going to rotary on all the projects Monday night.
Okay. I'm gonna go to the American Legion, uh, two weeks from now and then the P S O four weeks from now, anyone's open to direct, so I want to give you specifics. If anyone is wanting us to come and talk with you or your group, please let us know. All right, um, minutes will table them until later, given the time.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make?
Second.
All those in favor?